declarations of interest to a pecuniary councillor Thomas.
Non pecuniary 10A.
Okay, I also have a non pecuniary under nine E around the school admissions arrangement as a school governor councillor Albon.
Yeah, I have a non pecuniary interest in 10A, so I live near the site, subject for planning application.
Okay, thank you. Any others? No. Okay, thank you. Moving on then to item number three, town mayor's announcements. Just had a few visits and meetings over the past couple of weeks. In particular, I visited Ivor Valley School and it was great to meet the head teacher and Chair of Governors, who is with us this evening, to talk about the the school and have a tour round and see what what they're up to and the challenges they're facing at the moment. I also visited Stratton School, in particular to speak to the politics students, A level politics students at school, but also had a meeting with the head teacher and to visit the new ACE provision that is at the school as well. And last Saturday, I also visited the Biggleswade Community Garden at Northfields and it was great to see councillor Skilton there and other volunteers in the community and showing the kind of plants and vegetables and things that will be going in over the next few months and were coming out as well, in fact. And then, of course, we had on Sunday the Remembrance Sunday Service and Parade, which is extremely well attended by local residents, local groups and so on. We had the Lord Lieutenant with us and also one of the Deputy Leftenants from Bedfordshire as well in a different capacity. So a number of VIPs at that attendance. We've had a very nice letter from the Lord Lieutenant today congratulating the council on, in her view, an excellent event and extremely well attended and particularly with a focus on having young people involved through the scouting and cadets and so on, which is really good to receive. And then, of course, we had our short Armistice Day service this morning as well. I know a number of you were there as well in the in the town square. And it was nice, again, to have a good number of members of the public in attendance as well on what was a fairly cold Tuesday morning in November. So it was nice to see that as well. So I just want to get on record my thanks to all the officers and the different public realm staff, office staff who've been involved in those events over the past few weeks as well. So thank you for that. Okay, thank you. Okay, number four, we're into public open session. Are there any members of the public who want to speak? Okay, yep. And if you could introduce yourself as well, please, for the for the record, thank you.
Hello. Good evening, everyone. My name is Mark Tripp and I am the Chair of Governors at Ivor Valley School and College. Firstly, I'd like to apologize for the non attendance of our head, Joe Creswick, this evening. This is because CBC have warned that the school and its staff cannot publicly express their opinion if it differs from CBC's. I won't dwell on that matter tonight, but what I can say is that as my role is voluntary, I do not have to comply with CBC's wishes. My focus this evening is solely on getting the best outcomes for our students. Everybody here knows Ivor Valley School. However, I'm going to give a few bullet points with some information that councillors may not be aware of. We are a split site school between our school building and our college site. We currently have 270 pupils, 60 at our college site and 210 at our school. We employ just over 250 staff, making us one of the largest employers in Biggleswade. We are rated as a good school by Ofsted. In fact, at our last inspection, we were told that if it was a full visit, they would expect us to reach excellent. All of our students have full EHCP plans and most come with complex medical conditions. Amongst those, we have many wheelchair users, many with limited mobility, and one child spends most of his school day in a medical bed. And he has to be transported around our site like that. Where we lack facilities, we currently have to transport students out of area. A good example of this is we have a number of students that require hydrotherapy. And currently, we have to transport them to Kempton to access this. The net result in this is lost education time, increased pressures on our costs, disruption to students. And more importantly, it means students cannot access these sessions as often as they would like and need. Our main school site is no longer fit for purpose due to its age and condition. We have nine classrooms in our main building. Now, this differs from what's on the public consultation. They state 12, but I believe, but I can't confirm that they would include other rooms such as our move therapy room. But we have nine teaching classrooms. What we do have is 11 temporary buildings or temporary classrooms dotted around the site. There is insufficient space for parking, pickup, drop off. We don't have a hall large enough to support the whole school for sports, assemblies, lunches, family events. And we desperately need a hydrotherapy pool. The list is endless. And so what I would like to do this evening for any town councillors that wish to come and see the conditions for themselves, there will be an open invite for you. You make contact with the school, we'll be happy to see you. As formal consultees, we do know that you have an important role to play in the consultation process. And I would therefore ask that when you consider your response, that you do reject options 1A, 2, 3 and 5. Following reasons, option 1A, which is to build wholly on our existing site and provide additional parking on the adjacent site. This will be devastating for our school community. The works, however much they are phased, will bring significant disruption to our students both physically and mentally, especially when we take into account their sensory needs. The plan likely needs no future scope to increase, given the limited size. This is very important, given the announcement recently regarding Thamesford. It would also increase traffic on a site already struggling to cope today. Also, I'd like to point out that the school had no serious input into the design. Options two and three, aka London Road. The designs were done without our input, so we have very minimal information to work with. What we do know is that that site is currently used by others. And we do not deserve to be pitched against them and they do not deserve to be pitched against us. We're also aware that London Road was recently discussed in this in this room as potentially being used by preen community. As a Biggleswade resident myself, I would fully fully support that action. One of the plans at London Road involves a two storey building, which would therefore require lifts. If you remember, I've already spoken about our students in chairs and in beds. We have concerns, obviously, with regards to emergencies, any lockdowns we may have to enter. These plans would also split us into a free site and add considerable running costs in duplication and further disrupt our school community. We believe also that London Road will not cope with the large number of vehicles that will be accessed in the site, but there will be more on that in just one moment. Option five, the do nothing option, this simply is not viable. And it is fair to say that this is the one thing that ourselves and CBC do agree on. In effect, this will come down to a straightforward shootout between options 1B, which is CBC's preferred option, and option four, which is our own. I'm going to give a few examples quickly of where these two options differ. Disturbance to pupils in option 1B, in our opinion, will be significant regardless of how CBC downplay it. As governors, we have heard directly from our senior leaders, our staff and our parents. They're all the real experts and they have told us their concerns. Our preferred option at Land East will remove all of those concerns. Traffic. Today on our site, we had 32 vehicles, buses and taxis from central Bedfordshire Council. We had eight buses or taxis from other local authorities. We had one minibus from Mayform's residential home. And that list does not include the parents that drive. Building option 1B will increase these numbers considerably, whereas Land East removes the problem entirely. You will notice in the consultation that there is a reference to pickup and drop off points being included at our new school sites. This would include a significant number of our staff having to be on site earlier than they are today. Because to relieve the traffic congestion, we would have to take those vehicles into that school site long before the school actually opens. We also have concerns at the end of the day, we would have to bring those vehicles in earlier to reduce the traffic. That would give us a risk of our students being around more moving vehicles. Scope for the future. In the consultation document, it is suggested that option 1B has the future option to go to a primary and secondary model. This model does not fit into the same world that we know of. Our option at Land East does separate the school into its key stages. We know this, but what it does is it remains its community feel. It ensures that everything is situated on one site with minimal movement around site needed. And just to highlight this, when the mayor kindly visited us the other day, we experienced, or he experienced rain, and he saw school dinners being moved around our current site without cover. Now, please just imagine that's our students in CBC's preferred choice, in their chairs, their beds, and it's not raining, it's snowing heavily. Our school was involved in the planning of Land East. We know that is what is included because we helped design it. We had input into that layout. We had input into the best practices that were to be followed. We understood how it would help bring our fractured school community back together and not push it further apart. We know how it would provide the space and facilities for our for our students that they deserve. How it would be on one secure site, which wouldn't involve a public footpath crossing between the two sites. We also know how it would help us continue to be a centre of excellence for today and the future. Option B does not come with our input. It simply comes with lots of additional questions which the consultation states will need to be addressed at future stages. Finally, I'll leave you with the following. CBC's consultation states the refurbishing of existing buildings may mean some compromises. I, as Chair of Governors at Ivor Valley, strongly believe that we are where we are today because for too long we have always had to be the ones to make those compromises. I say that for Ivor Valley's future, it is time that CBC made those compromises. And I would therefore urge that you all consider joining us by choosing Land East option four as your preferred choice for our new school. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Tripp. That's very, very helpful and a really good eloquent and passionate sort of advocate for the school. I don't think we're in the position of this evening of making our, obviously, our final decision on what the the council's consultation response will be. I'm very conscious of times. We've got a lot to get through this evening, but it's clearly a huge issue for the town for all the reasons you've articulated. So if any members have got any quick questions while Mr. Tripp is with us, I'll allow that now. But otherwise, I think he expressed it to me privately. He can always come back another time or we can talk about it, but just anything you can think of while he's here that would, you know, that sparked a light bulb or whatever, then we can do that and we'll have to move on. Councillor Russell.
Simply to thank you for the invitation to visit and for a very clear outline of what the issues are. Thank you.
Councillor Strong.
I think it's an excellent presentation. It gives us all a better insight. If Mr. Tripp could just make sure the office have the contact details so that we can contact the schools and councillors to go and visit because I think members seeing what goes on at a school with send pupils and the difficulties they have will actually highlight it. But the option four seems to be logical from what Mr. Tripp's explained. But I think if we're going to put a case to central beds, we, the more we research it, the stronger the case we can make.
Okay, thank you. That's great. No questions? Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Tripp, and we'll 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 keep in touch on on this. But thank you for articulating.
I'll make sure I email the contact details over to you.
That's fine. I can pass it on. Yeah, absolutely. Thank you very much. Thanks a lot. Are there any more questions from the public or comments from the public? Anyone online? Helen? No. Okay. All right. Thank you. Okay, moving on to item number four. We've got our invited speakers from Tritax Symmetry. We've got not Jonathan Dawes, but Tom Leeming and Jake Howard from Tritax Symmetry. Over to you. I think you've got a presentation for us.
We do. Would you say we're ready to go? On the screen, it looks it. I, sorry, Tom Leeming said, good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councillors for inviting us to speak and update you on Symmetry Park, Biggleswade and the latest developments there and future plans. You're an important consultancy to us as, you know, locals. It's important. It's your town that we come and speak to you and engage fully with you. And I'd also like to thank you, all the attendees who came to our launch a few weeks ago and hopefully found it informative. And again, we'd like to extend that invitation when we complete the development to come and have a look again. Just if we flick on to the next next slide, I'm going to give a quick overview of ourselves again. You know us, so I'll make it very quick. Then we'll talk about phase three, the current under construction site, and then have a look at to the future as well. If you could move on, please. We're skipping this video, I think, and then there's a video of the launch later on. So just to background on Tritax and to remind you, we are a London listed fund, so FTSE 250 fund of about 6.8 billion pounds. We're the largest owner of larger warehouse real estate in the UK. We're very proud of our developments and our engagement with the communities in which they sit. We we've got a development team of about 45 people based in Northampton, Manchester. We're Northampton based, so only down the road really. And we we aim to create sort of developments within communities and linked to communities. Jake will come on to that later on when we when we talk about the developments and some of the community initiatives. Next one, quick quick flick through the the scale. I've mentioned 6.8 billion pound portfolio. So we've got about 104 assets, as in warehouse and production facilities, over 40 million square feet. And the contracted rent for those is 300, over 310 million pounds a year. And the point of this is a real estate investment trust is that is income focused. So it means that the fund are long term owners of these assets, which means, again, we're back into the community side of of the developments and, you know, it's really important to us to engage with the community. Next slide, please. We have land across the UK, which has got the ability to deliver over 30 million square feet of warehousing, which sounds like we probably can't contextualize it, to be honest, but it's a lot of space and we'll create a lot of investment, a lot of jobs in the UK. But clearly, it doesn't all come at once. It takes time to promote through the through the planning system in a proper way. Here, you've got a map just showing dots on the UK of where our sites are based. You'll see Biggleswade there at number three, and it just gives you an idea of the spread across the UK. Next slide, hand over to Jake to talk about Biggleswade.
Yeah, hi, everyone. Jake Howard. Great to be here. So for the main event, if you go to the next slide, please. Obviously, everyone is very aware of where we are on the map. Usually, this is what we put to be able to explain exactly where we are. I think the the key thing to note here is the reason why we selected Biggleswade and we've been in Biggleswade now for eight years or so is because of the key strategic links that the town offers with direct access onto the A1. We're able to, our occupiers are able to serve their markets, particularly in London. You can see the spread where they're able to reach. But with direct access onto the A1, they can get to the M1, the M25, the A14 really easily. And the the big difference being is that coming out of the city, they're able to benefit from the fact that it's cheaper than being directly in the city. And it's a real sort of USP for us in Biggleswade. So just to give a bit of a plot of history, for a lot of you will obviously have been to site and will recognize what we can see on screen here, but just to talk through, I guess, the journey from where we've come from. So phase one, the co op building, as you can see over in the corner, is a 660,000 square foot facility for co op. It was our first, obviously, step into Biggleswade. Really important building for us and a real key staple to prove the concept of large household occupiers want to be in this location. We continue, as Tom says, about being long term investors. We've actually just completed three MVA additional solar panels that go on to that roof. It's a really important piece because we future proof all of these buildings that we do so that whilst we built that that unit many years ago, obviously, times change. In that building, they've got a large amount of chilled and frozen in that facility. And so obviously, solar power generated to feed those assets is really important. Going on to our phase two, sorry, if you jump back one before we get to the carrot. Ruined my surprise. Phase two of the development was our sort of the next foray onto the site. Real great success for us. We were able to have all of those units, all four of the units were pre committed prior to construction. So a great success story on phase two, which has obviously led us to our phase three development, which you can see in the red line there. So this development, 830,000 square feet that we started on at the beginning of this year, we've actually today, which is great timing, just completed on the Warburtons unit that you can see there in the centre of the picture. So 66,000 square foot unit, which again is another statement to say household occupiers want to be here. And that's a really key building for them in their supply network in terms of being able to distribute across the country. I think from a change as you go around the estate, what's really clear is the constant improvements that we do make in our specifications. So it'd be great to be able to get as many of you to this phase to be able to see the fact that all of these buildings are built to bring them outstanding. The office facilities in here are incredible. They outstrip where where I work and these are meant to be what we're traditionally seen as warehouses, whereas actually we see them more as headquarters now, where a lot of people are moving their offices into the industrial space as well for those synergies to to happen. In terms of, we'll go to the next slide, please. So the carrot, which has become a bit of a staple in our marketing brand for Biggleswade, it's driven from the idea of being a Bill's Wade as a market garden town historically as a key trading point. It's also very distinguishable and draws a lot of attention, as you can imagine. And again, it's really sort of key and important in our branding of trying to put Biggleswade really on the map.
It was well liked at the launch. We did mention that in the monthly.
Absolutely. Next one, please. So for those who weren't able to attend our marketing, our launch event, where we were able to get about 100 people, both stakeholders, agents, a huge array of people, including 20 or students from Stratton School as well. Here's just a bit of an insight to what we what we did. If the sound doesn't work, we can recirculate the presentation so everyone can actually see it. Some really good content, just in terms of what the agents think of the area particularly, and some pieces from the Warburtons team as well. One of the things we just really wanted to highlight as well is what some of the activities that we've done in 2025 alone, be it the launch event that you can see, a very nice feature in the middle. But also in terms of raising money, I mean, during that event, we were able to raise money for MagPass. We were able to do a number of different things in terms of, obviously, with the school arriving, giving them a talk on terms of what Volkers, our main contractor, do, but also what we do, giving insight into the whole process, not just what happens in the buildings thereafter. I think it's really key as well. I mean, we've obviously, we're here for a long term. We've been here for a year building these buildings and we, at each stage, we've tried to involve the community as much as we can, be it through getting people down for the groundbreaking, number here we're attending, we held the infrastructure board as as well for Bedfordshire at New Autumn and gave a tour of our existing units, be it volunteering, a whole array of things. And actually, I really struggled to get some extra pieces on this slide. But again, it leads into the fact that we're long term investors and want to be part of the community. We'll skip this one as well, please. So obviously, we've had our success of phase one, two. We've got some really strong interest. We're under offer currently on unit seven on our phase three development and we've got really strong interest in two of the other three units. Obviously, with that, our attention then goes on to what can we do further. We obviously really believe in Biggleswade as an area and have been promoting our phase four development through the local plan. Alongside an occupier that we've been speaking to, we've configured an arrangement for our phase four scheme, which you can see on site as sort of the natural infill between our development and the A1. So whilst the the numbers in terms of square feet look quite large, that building is a multi tiered facility. But it's, again, it's the next natural step for us in terms of development for our phase at Biggleswade. I think one of the key things here to highlight, which hopefully is shown on the screen, is obviously the benefits that come to the town off the back of that, be it the 10 million pounds of business rates, the further investment into the town itself and the creation of of new jobs. And hopefully, obviously, off off the back of our phase four development, that will then take us to what you can see here in terms of a conclusion in total, really, between from phase one all the way to phase four, where 4.6 million square feet, which would generate just shy of 19 million pounds of business rate. So a huge contribution per annum from the park. Overall, it'll take our investment to 450 million, which is a quite considerable feat and generate a number of jobs throughout.
And that that figure doesn't include the investment by the occupiers in their buildings clearly through, you know, fit out and automation and various other elements. So you probably double that, to be quite honest, if not more.
It's a really good point and it's the same with the jobs that what's seen as the jobs for the actual warehouse and facility going forward. What it doesn't take into account is all of the jobs and the stakeholders that are reached along the way, be it through construction or all the way through, really. So it's, yeah, quite a considerable feat. I think we're just over time, but that is, in a nutshell, Symmetry Park, Biggleswade.
Thank you, Jake and Tom, as ever, for coming and updating us. I think we've got a little bit of time for quick questions, I think, from colleagues. I think before I'll use chair's privilege on on one and ask, I think, if you can expand on what you're doing around sort of skills and apprenticeships would be helpful, particularly as that impacts on on local residents. And we'll take some couple of quick questions if anybody's got any from from members.
Yeah, I can absolutely do that. So as I as I mentioned, in terms of a huge amount of work has come from Volkers, our main contractor, it's one of the one of the key parts of when we're procuring who's going to be able to build these, a large part of it is the social benefit that could be provided, given that obviously there's a lot of tangible skills that can be transferred across. And it's one of the big reasons why we're keen to always get as many eyes on to these facilities as possible. One of the big myths that we have with these units is the type of work that goes on inside. And in actual fact, there's a huge array of skill sets are required across both the construction and also operation of the facilities. So in terms of getting people along, we've had, I know there's been a number of people have completed work experience. There's pathways there for us to be able to engage with as many people to bring to the side, both in the construction element and also operationally.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, just to add that we liaise regularly with central beds councillors as well in terms of the skills and training. And Simon there is quite well integrated and so feeding into that. So, yeah, so it's important for us.
Brilliant. Thank you. Any questions from members at all? No, good. All right. There we go. It's got off lightly this evening. Thank you and do do keep in touch as you're sort of going through your, you know, the process and hearing more about Warburtons and obviously phase four in due course. So brilliant. Thanks for your time and thank you for coming.
Very much for having us. Yeah, we'll see you in a few months.
Okay, we're going to move on to members' questions now. Does any members have any any questions at all? Councillor Thomas. Sorry, Councillor Thomas.
Yeah, I noticed the, we're going to be having the light turn on towards the end of the month.
Yes.
And we're going to be closing the main highway besides the market, Market Square High Street. I was just wondering. I was just wondering, we've never done it for this light turn on before. So how how's that going to work and how are we going to sort of tell the people when it's shut and how long it's going to be shut for?
Okay, Peter. Okay, Mr Campbell, you have to give an update on the the road closure question from councillor Thomas. If if you've got all that, yeah. And the and the, yeah, the road closures specifically, yeah.
Yeah, the there'll be more extensive road closures this year than previously. Particularly around the high street, we've taken a decision that we really need to enhance the safety, security arrangements around that. So we've pretty much boxed off exclusion zone around the market square and including the high street. We have now a sort of a standard formula for diversions. Businesses have been notified well in advance, notices went out about a month ago. We are coming under increasing pressure from the S A G, Safety Advisory Group and the police to up our game and to be more operationally strategic, I think, in what we're doing. We've developed a new security plan, which is separate from, this is a standalone plan that's separate from our previous policy documents. So really, it's just become essential for us to have a more extensive security zone around town centre. And that has an impact on parking and particularly on access to the high street and the market square area during events.
Okay, councillor Thomas, has that answered your question?
I'm just wondering about the timings of when it's shut and are you gonna? Obviously, for the event this weekend, the Remembrance Day, there was cars still parked in there and we had to get them removed. So what about the parking areas coming, is it worth cutting them off early just to make sure you get?
Yeah, it's different times for different areas. So Market Square, you'd be aware, as of like Remembrance Day, we shut them off from about six in the morning to set everything up. In terms of the high streets, we're only going to close that from two o'clock. So that'll give people a bit more time to come and go before that. But then there will have to be the closure, the diversions and the exclusion zone.
So how are you going to guarantee all the car parking's gone, all the parked cars are gone?
We do our best to notify people. As you see at the weekend, lots of laminated notices stuck all over the place telling people there will be no parking, telling them what days, telling them between which times. You'd have noticed a flurry of yellow signs saying this road will be closed between this and that day. They've gone up in the last couple of weeks. So that's increasingly the the model of raising awareness and informing people. And despite all of this, people still leave parked cars in awkward places. We have to have them removed, towed and such like. Which is unfortunate because if they thought with enough notice and enough leaflets and enough things stuck on bollards and lampposts and anything else that doesn't move, they should have been well aware of it before they erroneously left their cars in place.
Okay.
Are we going to do some communications online to say?
Okay, all right, we'll move on from that issue. Anyone members' questions, councillor Jones? You can, yes, make it quick.
One was about businesses speeding back because it does feel like we're shutting quite early. And the other one was, and I know you would have worked this through, but just curiosity from my understanding, how does that work with highways then if we're closing off the main road? And then I know that we're the we're the backup, so just wondering how that works from a curiosity standpoint.
Well, in in short, we have to apply for a temporary traffic regulation order, T C R O. We have to get those approved. You'll see for the Christmas lights, which on Central Beds, who are the highways authority, have done a blanket cover of pretty much all the events across the district area. So we have to get authorization to do that. And then that gives us the the powers basically to close the roads and such like. We're trying to keep it within reasonable times. We have to organize diversionary routes. We have to publish maps and basically make sure that people are aware of the closures, the parking restrictions, the diversionary routes.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
And the businesses, just thinking hard.
That in terms of the businesses that they've been informed, and one of the things we'd like to do is invite them to actually come out in front of their shop frontages and set up stalls on the pavements and become part of the Christmas event itself.
I got councillor, like, we make this extremely quick.
Extremely brief, just just an observation, I'd be grateful if we gave consideration to the shortest window. So I looked at all of the road closures for Sunday throughout Central Bedfordshire because they're all listed on one convenient page. And the ones in Biggleswade were by far the longest. So many other towns, they were closing between maybe ten and twelve. And I think the closures in Biggleswade, it was an excellent event, but the closure started at eight and continued until one o'clock, which to me feels like it's considerably longer than perhaps necessary. So maybe we could look at that.
Okay, councillor Strong, then that's it and make it, please make it quick.
Right, it would be very helpful if we could be provided with details of all diversions because particularly, there's a rat run down Church Street, but going north, south. But it's going south, north from the London Road direction that causes me much more concern. And I think there needs to be better signposting from a greater distance so that people do not come in and get caught. Because it's going to, it affects all businesses in the town, not just the market square and all residents. So if we could have a bit more publicity generally for everybody, I think that would be a very good idea.
Thank you, I think officers have taken that on board. Right, let's move on, thank you. Number seven, minutes and recommendations of the meeting from the fourteenth of October. So I'll go through them for accuracy, page ten, page eleven, page twelve, page thirteen, page fourteen, page fifteen, page sixteen, page seventeen. We're all happy with the with that, excellent. So happy with the accuracy of those minutes, thank you. Yes, are you happy for me to sign it? Yes, great, thank you. I didn't get any dissent, but anyway. Number eight, then, matters arising from that council meeting. So we'll go through them page by page. So page ten, thank you, page ten, page eleven, page twelve, page thirteen, page fourteen, page fifteen, page sixteen, page seventeen. Nice, great, okay, thank you very much. Right, okay, now, before we move on to the substantive part of the meeting, I want to, because there is a lot on the agenda this evening, plus I'm hopeful, obviously, we need to, we need to go into exempt as well, to take the reports as read. And I think I would like officers only to comment if there is something new or particularly pressing that we want to hear about rather than a regurgitation of maybe some of the same reports. So because we are very pressed for time, so please contribute, but we we, I'm, we need to, we need to move on this evening. So I'm going to go through, moving on then, page nine, A, external audit. Is there anything new or pressing we need? Right, okay, members' comments, please. Okay, so we, there are two recommendations then. Obviously, consider the report, which I think we've done. And obviously, the issue around the independence and auditor. So can we have a proposal in a second, please, councillor Arben?
Yeah, I'd like to propose a recommendation as I set out.
Thank you very much, a second. Sorry, councillor Barrett, a second for that, yeah. Councillor Russell, did you want to say something?
May I just add to that recommendation, please, that we thank all the staff involved?
Great, yes, absolutely, yes, thank you, yeah, please do pass that on as well. Excellent, great, so all those in favour, is the motion set out? Great, I think that's unanimous, brilliant, thank you very much. Okay, nine B, corporate aspirations document. Just like to remind members, we did spend over two hours on this a few weeks ago, going through line by line, so. But if anybody's got any questions at this juncture, councillor Russell.
I'd just like to move that we adopt corporate aspirations, please.
Okay, thank you, is there a second for that? Okay, councillor Thomas, great, okay. Okay, all those in favour of approving the corporate aspiration set out? Okay, all those against abstentions? Councillor North, have you abstained or against or in favour? Okay, that's great, so that is. So that's unanimous then, I think, my reckoning, so thank you very much, that colleagues. Eight C, general reserves policy.
Would be approved.
Okay, yeah, we have a recommendation, so cover proposal in a second if that, sorry, councillor Strong. Prove it, okay, great, seconded, okay, all those in favour? Excellent, unanimous, thank you very much. So I like to see. Okay, well, I'm going faster, I can keep up now. Nine D, community governance review. I will allow councillor Russell to to say a few comments on this because it is, it is not entirely clear the difference between the stage two and the stage one. I think for members to understand where we are with it, if that's okay. So councillor Russell obviously led that that process. And if the town clerk wishes to say anything afterwards, I'll allow him to say as well. Councillor Russell.
I'm not very happy with this at all, as you might imagine.
Yeah.
We were asked to submit any proposals for changes within the community governance review. And there was a long document from Central Beds, which told us what we needed to do. We went through the whole process. Councillor Foster, the clerk and myself spent a lot of time meeting neighbouring parishes, talking through the issues. And we put together a very good report and submission. And it is just dismissed in one sentence by Central Beds in that they don't want to make any major changes. They don't define what a major change is as opposed to a small change. But one of the changes that we proposed is fully agreed by the other parish and wouldn't have required any changes to the ward boundaries or ward councils or anything like that. So it was a fairly straightforward thing. What I note from the documents that we've had back from Central Beds is that most of the submissions seem to have been through computers, through the portal. And they make a specific note that we had the temerity to submit a report, which we did. So what I would like to propose is that we write to Central Beds and express our concern that we went to all that trouble on their invitation and that they haven't taken our submission seriously. And I also suggest that we resubmit for the second time, even though they've said they won't review it again. I just think we have to rattle pages a bit. And I think the letter should go to Brian Dunleavy, who's in charge of this governance review, with a copy to Marcel Quaffé. And I'm saying this, having spoken yesterday to a colleague from another large town council in Central Bedfordshire, who is equally enraged and they have been through the same process. I couldn't see the name of the town council in the the papers from Central Beds, so I won't mention it. But we had a conversation about how we'd been through all of this process, talking to other parishes, da di da di da. And just been dismissed. So I think the questions to ask are, why was this governance review instigated at this stage? Because the government requires principal authorities to go through this process every ten to fifteen years. The last time it was done was twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen. So there was no real requirement at the moment, so why did they do it? And why did they do it if they're not prepared to take through what they call large scale changes?
Yep.
You know, what what is the point of it all? Why did they instigate it? And why aren't they following the the due process? Because actually, we conform with everything that's on the government website.
Yes.
As far as he's concerned. So I'm sorry, but I'd I'd like to suggest that that's the way ahead.
Okay, great. Is that a formal proposal, councillor Russell too? Okay, is there a second for that? Councillor Jones, are you seconding that or? Okay, we'll do that and then I'll come to the, okay. Councillor Jones, I think the town clerk wants to speak briefly as well.
I think councillor Russell's articulated very clearly. Maybe just a couple of points. In the initial consultation that came to us, the reasoning they gave was because of the quote, large elements of development that were taking place. That was the reason they said they are, they did it. And it was well in advance when they were required to do it. Just to reinforce what councillor Russell said, we took this extremely seriously. Spent a lot of, a lot of time with our neighbours in proper consultation, yeah. And we wrote a very detailed, I think, and professional submission, which doesn't look to have been considered properly at all. And in a lot of cases, our neighbours were well in support of our recommendations. So it's surprising that C B C decided to to push them aside.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, town clerk, councillor Jones.
Thank you, I just, I just wanted some clarification, if that's okay, councillor Russell. When you mentioned about other parishes submitting through the portal, are you saying that this time around, we would present our report through the portal so that they have it both ways? And then they would consider it? Or are you saying you don't think they'd consider it either way? I was just trying to understand what you're saying.
I haven't looked at the portal, I don't know how that works. If we could could submit it by uploading our document through the portal, that would be fine. But from what I've seen in the documents that were on SharePoint, it was a series of questions that people were asked to respond to. So our document wouldn't quite fit that. But if it can be submitted through the portal as an attachment, fine. But I think we need to submit it as we did before as well. I'm not convinced that they will consider it, but I think we need to make a point. Because it's not right that the principal authority makes a town council jump through all those hoops and then just simply dismisses it in in literally a couple of words.
I completely agree, I'm just wondering if we can play the game a little bit. If they've already had it in one version, if we can try and manipulate it in some way to fit theirs, then at least we've done our due diligence and they've had it in both sides, just to try and make sure that they can't say they haven't received it. It's just a thought.
I think the town clerk wants to comment on that specific point.
Clarification. You had two choices, you either submitted it through the portal or you submitted it separately. Yeah, there were, both options, both options were entirely correct. There's there's no issues connected to our submission. The portal, though, actually, when you try and use it, is more for kind of what you might call smaller town, smaller parish councils, where actually it asks a question and your response is probably a sentence or maybe a paragraph. And that's it effectively, and what councillor Russell was saying, it restricts your ability to actually go into any detail. In our sense, our submission went to, I think, I think to the gold standard, we answered all of their questions in great amount of detail.
So they can't turn around and say that we didn't?
Well, actually, what I've also, what I also did was I asked them to formally acknowledge receipt, so I have that.
No, okay, that's good, great, councillor Barrett.
Very brave, I also read in their response and something to do with timings. They were talking about maybe not at this time, another comment. So I think so, if we're going to get some clarity, I think we need to understand clarity, not only on the points already made, but when is the right time to do this? If it's not when they've asked us in the first place.
Yes, councillor Russell, would you, would that be something you would include in your response or?
It's a question we can ask Mr Dunleavy and Mr Quaffé.
Okay, right.
But I I shouldn't really say this, but I just think they don't want to be bothered to do it.
Well, we can find out, can't we? We can find out. Councillor Strong, and then we need to take a vote on this.
Yes, can we ask them how much money they've wasted on this exercise in view of the fact they're obviously going to do nothing about about it? We've spent a considerable amount of officer and member time on doing so. And it's absolute disgrace if they're going to ignore it totally in the way they appear to have done. So I think it's quite a reasonable question to find out how much the council taxpayers in Bedford, Central Bedfordshire have had their money wasted by Central Beds.
That's a very good question, councillor Strong, thank you. Yeah, I mean, we can, we can include that if if you want in our question, I think. Okay, so does everybody understand the 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 motion port forward by councillor Russell? I think I needed a second, actually, councillor Jones, great. So all those in favour of the motion set up by councillor? So all those in favour of the motion set out by councillor Russell, which we can, we'll follow up with Central Beds in writing, okay? All those in favour? Great, that's unanimous. Thank you very much. Okay, nine E, CBC consultation, again, school admissions arrangements. Thoughts, questions on that? Councillor Russell.
I haven't had time to study it in a lot of detail, but what I read through, I couldn't see anything that jumped out at me that was not right or could be problematical. So I don't think we should necessarily make any comment on this consultation unless others have found something different.
Councillor Jones's comment.
So the only thing, I don't know if it's just an observation versus a query, is to do with the consistency of the application of the admissions criteria across it. So on page 74, and bear with me because my writing isn't as neat as it felt at the time as I was writing it, it turns out.
I know that feeling very well.
Yeah. So the ordering of the criteria, one, two, three, four, five, children living outside the catchment area with a sibling at the school is in a different order. So that's for Edward Peak compared to the CBC standard admissions over subscription criteria. And just reflecting on experiences that I know other people have had, how do they propose that parents make that work? Should it not be the same admissions criteria for the schools or in its order as much as possible? And if you look at page 99, it's okay for teachers to be a priority who have children at the school they're working. But then if you've got a parent trying to get two children to two schools in a different area, just because they don't work at that school, that's probably even more stressful than it is if you were working there. So I'm just, there's obviously a method behind it, but it's not apparent to me as I look here. It just doesn't feel like a consistent application of the criteria. Thinking about the reality of a parent dropping a child. I know we're not a big town. It takes like three or four minutes to get around, but you would hope it would take a bit longer because you're driving very responsibly, especially at children walking around time. Just, yeah, something, I just don't think it's well thought out at that point. And it just seems a bit biased towards the teacher in that moment, rather than them being treated as a parent equally. So that was my only observation.
Okay, thank you for that. I take your point. I think that's probably a bit out with the council, if I'm honest, in terms of that. I mean, it's a very, very valid and relevant question, but I'm not quite sure where that would sit in terms of a query from Biggleswade Town Council, as it's not one of our responsibilities. So maybe Helen can share the details for the consultation and you could ask them directly if that would be okay. I don't know. So I genuinely don't know what the answer is as a. Yeah, if you as an individual wanted to raise that, I think that's okay. But I think we'd be hard pressed as a sort of council really to do that, unfortunately. I think, I'm inclined to agree with councillor Russell on that. I think it's probably ought to be a bit neutral on this, I think. I must, I fully accept that, as I declared at the beginning, I've got a slight interest in this anyway, so. But if you're happy with that, we can move on if you want.
Yeah, I suppose I just, what is our role then in this?
Well, it's, I mean, we can, we can, I mean, whether you think we could raise that, Peter, or go on.
I don't see any, I mean, I don't see any reason why councillor Jones's comments can't be incorporated into a response. However, we have limited power and limited influence connected to this.
Okay, all right. Okay, I think what we can do is then maybe just to find a way through is just to get some clarity. I think it'd be useful from, if an officer could have. Go on.
Fairly clear on it. I mean, but I think it's, the council's the voice of the community.
Yeah. Okay, I think, all right, okay, I'll go back to what I was saying earlier. I think maybe if Helen can share the details of councillor Jones about where any further questions can be raised and if she wants to raise them separately, that's okay. And otherwise we'll just move on, I think, if that's okay. All right. Thank you all. Okay, F. Oh, sorry, yes, we've, well, we've had nine F. We've had obviously a presentation from Mr Tripp about Ival Valley School. Are there any other further questions, thoughts from members after hearing his presentation, but also just in terms of the way forward from the council? Councillor Albom.
Yeah, I would like to thank Mr Tripp for the comments that he made earlier. And I think we should take them into account as a council. I wanted to add something. So option one A and option one B. Both of those involve the site being split over what is a public footpath. And in, one of them is to make provision for parking and the other is to, I guess there's provision for parking in that as well, but there'd be a lot of vehicle movements in that area. And there is a public footpath there and a public footpath that children on their way to school use. So I think that that needs to be raised as an issue. And any plans, if they take place in that area, that they need to be thoroughly look at how pedestrians might be impacted by it.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Russell and councillor Barrett.
I think there is an awful lot of questions that we would like clarification for before we make a final decision on this. And I'm glad that we can discuss it tonight and then come back to it when hopefully with some more information. It's not clear to me exactly what the scope of the actual sites are, particularly the London Road and the option four site. Where exactly is it? Because trying to look this up, I had assumed that the option four site was within the current Land East planning permission, because there was supposed to be a secondary school there.
Yeah.
When the section 106 went through. But trying to look at stuff online, it looks as if it might be in the site that's been put forward in the call for sites, which is very odd. Because that means it would be years and years down the line before it becomes available. So I think we need some clarity from Central Beds on where the actual sites are. Is London Road the whole site? As has been mentioned, there are still things happening on that site. And I think it's very relevant, the item that Mr Tripp talked about, which is the traffic management at the London Road site. I'm interested in the finances. I would like to see more of a breakdown of the finances. And particularly, I wonder whether Central Beds are being honest and whether they've factored in the sale of the current school site for housing, which is what would happen if the school moved out. And some of these, some of these costs here seem out of proportion. I don't know a lot about school buildings, but I was responsible for the extension at Stratton. I've got some idea of what, what things cost. So I wonder whether we could write to Central Beds and ask them some more clarification on that and give them a deadline of the end of November, so that we can discuss this again at our December meeting.
Yep.
So, yes, I suppose that's a formal proposal, please, to write to Central Beds. Ask exactly where the actual sites are, what their proposals are for traffic management at the London Road site, more of a breakdown of the finances and particularly whether they factored in the land sale.
Okay, thank you for that. I'll take some more questions and we'll come back. Councillor Barrett.
I was going to also pick up on the finance side of things, but in addition, I was also going to say that I'm not an expert in schools or any of these things here. And we've heard from someone, I think, who is. My view is that at this stage, early stage, I know we're going to discuss it in December perhaps. This early stage option four does sound to be the right option for people who seem to know about schools and work with schools on a day to day basis. So in these sorts of situations where I'm not that knowledgeable, I will defer to people who are. So in this situation, I would look at that seriously as we go forward.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor Barrett.
And if we could, a lot of the content of that presentation would be used in our response anyway.
Yes, absolutely. Yeah. Councillor Strong.
So on the question of the financing, I had understood at one stage that Central Beds were looking at a completely new special school within Biggleswade, financed largely by the DFE, the Department for Education, rather than Central Beds Council. Something seems to have changed because that contract, I believe, was awarded but has now been dropped. So what are Central Beds actually doing? How much is it going to cost Central Beds? Is there DFE funding? And what other consultations and the proposals in actually running this school? Because it does seem to me that they're going off a half cock, for want of a better description, in terms of what they're doing. But I think possibly we as councillors, if we could get to the library to see the display tomorrow, that would be a good thing. Or I don't know whether the school will actually have the displays there so that we can see it if we visit. But I think it would be very helpful if before we discuss this in more detail, if as many councillors as possible can actually get to the the school and actually have a look and see what's actually involved there and understand some of the difficulties that the school have at present and what are some things that can be solved, such as the hydrotherapy pool. That is absolutely essential for this type of school, along with sensory rooms, et cetera. So there's a lot to be considered and we need to give it proper consideration because it's a big school, in fact, for a special school. So I think we need to look into that in some more detail.
Now, thank you, councillor Strong. I mean, when the earlier consultation was launched, because I realise we've had this restart, the maps and the plans and everything were in the library and it was quite a detailed explanation. So I would hope I've not been in since, whether it's been re, you know, reinstalled. But it's, that is, it's a good way to have a look at it because it's quite a big setup and you can see it quite clearly. So I'd encourage members to go and do that. I think in terms of visiting Ival, I'll speak to Mr Tripp outside the meeting, but it may be better that we organise a particular time to have a number of councillors coming in rather than perhaps one at a time and maybe being a bit too disruptive. But we can fine tune that and find a time of mutual convenience through officers here perhaps. So we'll bear that in mind. I've got councillor Jones and councillor Knight and then back to councillor Russell's motion.
I just wondered, and I'm not sure if this is a question for the school or for CBC when we go back to them and ask the additional questions about transition plans. And the reason I ask that is if we did go for, if the decision was made that option four was the preferred option, just thinking about the current state of the site and the length of time it would take to be live fully on option four, what is the support that might be required that would need to be built in? So I'm just wondering if that's something, I don't know where it sits, but it's just something that we should be mindful of, the potential costs that might be required, because we are probably talking a good few years away.
No, sure. I mean, I think the timescales that I saw, I know Biggleswade 28, 29 were the kind of years, but I think that's, I mean, maybe we could include in councillor Russell's correspondence or proposed correspondence that we're going to have with Central Beds. Councillor Knight, and then we'll come back.
Thank you. So I'm concerned that we've heard tonight that apparently the head teacher or other senior staff aren't allowed to speak to us about the project. I don't really know what CBC have to fear about an open informed debate during the consultation. I wonder whether we need to formally invite a senior representative of CBC to come to our meeting to ask some of our questions, because I'm sure we will have some.
Thank you, councillor Knight. I mean, maybe we could include that in the letter that we say and open the invitation to them, but that's up to councillor Russell. I'll come back to that in a minute. Councillor Strong, do you have any more comments?
Just a quick observation. I think we've got a JMC meeting fairly shortly. Perhaps it could be raised there.
Yes, we have indeed. Couple of weeks, I think, maybe. But yes, that's certainly something we could include on that. And obviously we need to speak to the chair about that agenda, but I'm sure that's something he would welcome. Okay, so we have a motion on the table. I need a a second for it as well. So councillor Russell proposed, we've got a second for councillor Barrett. Are you happy, councillor Russell, with the sort of extra input from colleagues or do you feel that's going to be too much or?
I was going to say, one of the things that I admitted was councillor Albom's point, which I think is a fair point about the use of the footpath if some of those issues go ahead. Because it wouldn't be safe at certain times, particularly when children are walking to Stratton School.
Yes, okay.
So, yes.
Do you just want to quickly go through the ones you've got, so we've captured everything?
It's the actual sites, the definition of the actual sites, what are we talking about? Traffic management on London Road. Breakdown of the finances, how do they get to those figures? Have they factored in the land sale? Have they thought about the use of the public footpath? And are we right in thinking that there was the possibility of some DFE funding?
Yes.
Which has been mentioned in the past. I think inviting somebody to come and speak to us would be a good thing. The whole transition thing depends on whether which site is chosen. But I think if we did get somebody here, we could ask them about transition.
Yeah, yeah, I know that having had obviously some limited involvement in the two tier transition, I know there are estates people within the education area within Central Beds, but obviously the director of Children's Services might be the person to ask and we see where we go from there. But we could include that in the letter. Okay, I'll ask the town clerk and then we'll wrap this up. Go on. You're happy to take that forward? Okay, great. Thank you very much. Okay, so all those in favour of the motion as set out, councillor Russell writing to Central Beds about all the points at Ival. Good, that's unanimous and we'll sort of finesse that offline, but I think that we've got the key points. That's great. Thank you very much. Okay. Yep, councillor Russell, it's you again. Do you need a glass of water before we start?
We were getting through so quickly.
I know we were, we were. Doing my best. So item G, parking on Hitchens Street. There's a motion from a member about Hitchens Street. Councillor Russell.
I hope that this can be quick. I hope it's self explanatory. I've heard people talking to me about the problems of getting parking tickets where there are no markings on the road, there are no signs up, and it's not apparent whether you can or can't park. So as I've said, residents complaining about issues with the parking at the north end of Hitchens Street. The town clerk to be requested to write to CBC for clarification of whether there is a traffic regulation order and if so, its terms. And then there's been a great deal of confusion about whether it's only people with blue badges who can park there. One traffic warden said, yes, it's fine with blue badges. Others said, no, it's not. So we need particular clarification on blue badges. So simply asking for council's agreement to write to Central Beds for that clarification. And then we can see where we go from there.
Okay, so you're proposing it. Are you seconding it, councillor Skilton?
I've just got a little bit of a comment just for a bit of context, as obviously I have some expertise in this field. I went and had a look at this when I saw the agenda and it's a restricted parking zone, which means it cannot have road markings. That's the specific kind of parking scheme that is. It must not have line markings in a restricted parking zone. It's not a controlled parking zone. I think there is a defect with it because I think, I think the signs need to be a gate sign where you have two signs. So one on each side of the road and the one is missing from the market square end of Hitchens Street. On the left hand side, as you look away from the market square, there's one missing. But, but I mean, and obviously if the traffic warden's giving out duff advice, that's obviously unacceptable. So I think we should be writing to CBC for clarification, but but that, just a little bit of context.
No, thank you. It sounds like there's defective signage or information anyway, doesn't it? So I think we need to explore this for sure. Okay, so we, councillor Russell proposed, have we got a second for that, please? Councillor North, that's great, thank you. Okay, so all those in favour of the writing Central Beds in the way that's been set out? Yep, that's unanimous. Thank you very much. I couldn't see councillor Agnew there, but, yep, great. She's hiding behind councillor North. Great, thank you very much for that. We'll take that forward. And go in the ever bigger postbag to Central Beds. Okay, item number H, notice of confirmation, public path order, Biggleswade, Bridleway, 87 and 88 Langford, Bridleway number 20. Thoughts, comments, please.
Note it.
Note it. Thank you very much. Okay, that's good. Yeah, everyone happy with that one? I, public path diversion order, footpath 24. Councillor Albom.
I was just regularising what the path is people take at the moment, so.
Okay, thank you. Just, no objection. No objection. Okay, that's great. I can't see any problem with that. J, local green spaces. Just any further comment, councillor Russell?
Just to note that we've designated 15 local green spaces in the neighbourhood plan. But that was the maximum amount that we were allowed to do. And I don't know whether the regulations have changed or might change on that. So if we've got other areas that we would like to designate as green spaces, which gives them the same kind of protection as green belt, then I think we have to go ahead with this. It's a little bit messy. But it's also made me, if I might just add, that our neighbourhood plan, believe it or not, is three years old now. And you're meant to revise it every five years. The timing is difficult because Central Beds hope to have their local plan in place in 2027, which also happens to be the year of elections, which makes it even more complicated. Which also happens to be the year of elections, which makes it even more complicated. Um. And, but I think we will need to look at where we are with the, um, neighbourhood plan, probably starting in a year eighteen months' time. Um, and it's helpful if the neighbourhood plan is made. I E comes into force after the local plan because then the neighbourhood plan has more weight. So I think we, we just need to look at that. So I'm flagging that one up, but I think in, in this case, we should, um. Ask the officers to go ahead and submit the sites that they've been looking at.
Okay.
Um, we haven't got a list, which is a bit unfortunate, but, um, fine, you know.
Okay, all right, thank you. Great, so, um, um. Are you proposing that then as a, as a motion?
I propose that we ask the officers to go ahead.
All right, okay. Uh, sorry, councillor Strong.
Yes, I hope councillor Russell would actually include in that proposal that officers specifically include the fifteen sites that are in the neighbourhood local plan. Because just being a little bit cynical, I can see CBC don't see them actually mentioned specifically. They'll somehow miss them off the list.
Okay.
Um, I don't think that's right. I think we would be doing the wrong thing to do that.
Right, okay.
Saying, but we have the neighbourhood plan in place. It's got more weight than the local plan at the moment. We can see where we go with this, but. There was something in the Central Beds stuff about don't resubmit and I, I don't want to see us getting wrong on that.
Okay. Okay, so I, I was, so I will defer to councillor Russell's, uh, expertise on this one. So, um, can I have a second for that then, please? Uh, councillor Albon, thank you very much. Okay, so all those in favour of just asking officers to go forward with plans set out. Great, unanimous, thank you very much. Um, item K, banking provision update. Um. Obviously, we've got, um, it's, it's listed there, but I'm going to allow councillor Strong to, to speak first. Uh, I know we can go from there.
Thank you, chairman. I think the situation actually has changed quite dramatically. Now Lloyd's Bank has closed and apparently. Lloyd's Bank are actually stopping the ability of local people or anybody to actually do banking. With Lloyds via the post office as at the end of this year. That is quite a different situation from what we'd been led to believe originally, where people would be able to continue banking. So I think that. There are various criteria that would be followed and I appreciate there may be other local towns that are looking at this. But there are a number of criteria such as vulnerability, number of people, access generally, and it's not just access to cash. There are banking services available. So I think that, um, I'd like to think that we would actually write again. Uh, with a detailed proposal possibly, um, in conjunction, you've, you've been very keen on this, Mr. Mayor yourself, so. Um, I think possibly if, uh, two or three of us with the town clerk could actually put together a, a proposal for this. Arguing all the cases from our local knowledge and everything else because we're a growing town, twenty three and a half thousand people. Uh, we've heard of Tritax today, which is big business. We've got lots of developments coming up in the future. And there are many villages around here that would appreciate banking services and even small towns like Sheffield that haven't got any. That we are the hub, we're the biggest town in this part of North Bedfordshire, um, and it's essential that we fight. I know there may be some concerns that we might be blocked, but we, if we don't ask, we don't get. And we should fight for everybody in the town and the businesses and the local people.
Okay, thank you, councillor Strong. Councillor Barrett?
Just in addition to that, I think, um, we've heard that the post office do provide some of the services regards banking. I think it'd be good in addition to that, that we actually go and speak to them again and just be absolutely clear what services they are going to provide going forward now that we've got. And some different news around Lloyds and I think once we understand that, then we have a proposal to say. We need these things to be delivered in our town, please, maybe via cash access.
Okay.
As a proposal.
Okay, that, that sounds good. Um, okay, right, we've got, uh. So we've obviously, we've got this stated here, um, so I'm trying to think which, how are you sort of choreograph this now, whether we. Go and speak to the post office first and then take the motion or councillor Strong, how would you want to do it?
Uh, I think the sensible thing to do would be to speak with the post office sooner rather than later.
Okay.
So that we can actually write, put, couch the letter in the definitive terms rather than, um, just rumours. So. And I'm sure knowing the post office people, they've been very helpful and enthusiastic in the past, that they'd be happy to help us so we could understand them. And we can help benefit them as well, probably by getting clarity.
Okay, that's great. Um, and just so we're clear, would you want that, um, correspondence come from the town clerk on behalf of, of behalf of the council or?
Yeah, I think, I, I think it would be, should be coming from the town clerk. Um, the, the local MP should be copied in as well. Um, but I think it would be helpful for the town clerk to have one or two additional, uh, viewpoints because some of us have. Looked into it and have got some arguments that we might put forward.
That's fine. I was just checking that an, an individual councillor wasn't going to be delegated to do it. I was just.
No, no, it's got to be through the town clerk, that's fine. Councillor Barrett?
Thought then, um, we've had a lovely presentation from Tritax earlier on telling us about how wonderful our town is and. How big it's going to be and how many employees are going to be coming, et cetera, et cetera. Might be interesting to ask them if they've got any influence over these sorts of things.
Okay.
Separately, not by the town clerk necessarily, but we can, maybe we could consider those sorts of things approaches.
Okay, all right, no, thank you. So we've got, we've got a motion there about, um, uh, looking at the, um. Uh, obviously the, the banking situation again, but in the, in the first instance to, to contact the post office, uh, post office, post buster. So. Okay, um, councillor Knight, have you got a question?
Just a very quick statement. So I've just looked it up. So the service is being withdrawn, so it will no longer be possible to pay a check in. At the post office from the end of the year, but withdrawing cash or depositing cash continues.
Yeah, yes, as a business in town that happens to, you've used Lloyds, we will not be able to pay checks in. Um, from the end of the year. Um, there are other ways of paying checks in, but not necessarily the size that we receive.
No, okay, thank you. Okay, so we've got, um, proposal and then councillor Barrett as a second for that? Yeah, great. So all those in favour is the, uh, the motion set out and, uh, we, we'll, as we've just discussed, okay. Unanimous, thank you very much. Great. Um, number ten, planning applications. Ten A, Greenways Drove Road. Councillor Russell.
Um, it looked like a very tight site, this. It's verging on overdevelopment. But rather than object outright, what I would like to say is that we emphasise. Um, to Central Beds that they should make sure that the development complies with two of our policies in the neighbourhood plan. And that's BRD one and BTM one. And that's covers things like making sure there are screens for bins and, um, covered cycle and scooter storage.
Okay.
So, um, there's, it's the section in the plan on, on residential development and I think. Because it's such a tight site, I wouldn't like to see those things skimped on.
No, no, that's right. I mean, I think, in my view, it probably is verging on overdevelopment, but I think we, we, those things are quite strong, aren't they, in terms of the, uh. The specification, so, yeah, yeah. So we can, uh, are members in favour of, uh, taking that approach? Yeah, no, no dissent, okay. We'll do that one on, uh, okay, on the green ways, okay. Right, B, uh, ten B, Brunswick Place. No, subject to neighbours, yeah, no objections, okay. Uh, it's ten C, Six Windmill View. To subject to neighbours again, okay, thank you. Right, number eleven, planning applications, um, planning application outcomes. Questions, comments? No, okay. All right, move on. Uh, number twelve, accounts. Um, position and accounts for September twenty twenty five. Is there anything new, Mr. Ball, that you want to add? No? Great, okay. So it's set out as it is and we just get to that right bit. Yeah, thank you. Okay, so we do need to consider and approve the, the financial manager report. Councillor Strong.
Providing, um, no other members have got questions, I would suggest, recommend that we approve the report.
Brilliant, that's okay. Councillor Barrett, second, yeah. Councillor Russell, yeah. All those in favour? Great, unanimous, thank you very much. Right, um, what else? We're thirteen, so we're on to items for information now, quarterly bank reconciliations. Note the report, yeah, note it. Um, and then thirteen B, standing orders, the note from councillor Strong and the town clerk. Just to note it, yeah, just note it, that's fine. And then, um. Thirteen C, the cemetery park phase three road names, which I think is quite a nice, uh, thing to, uh, to. Um, to, to end on, as it were. Um, we, we put those in a little while ago, so that's good that they've gone through. I'm happy to note it still, you know, councillor Albon, they came from you.
They haven't quite gone through.
Well, okay, but it's, it's, I think, uh.
Yeah, they've decided not to use one of our names. I don't know why they picked on Spitfire. Um, but we had a whole host of, of names. So I'm just suggesting that we keep those names in, on, yeah. On dry ice to, in, in case we need to, uh, wheel them out again.
No, thank you. I was, I was getting overly excited about the fact that Central Beds had agreed, actually agreed to something, uh. But I appreciate with the, the, this Spitfire one wasn't there, but I'm sure there are lots of others we could probably generate in due course if there are more roads as well, so. Um, so that's good. Um, thirteen D then, Health Hub, um. Anything you wanted to add on that, town clerk?
Just come up on a number of occasions and I think all of us are well aware of the. Previous commitments that were made associated with this that were quite public at the time. And I persevered with this in regard to the directors at CBC. And didn't get a lot of clarity and that's the best I've got back so far. But obviously I'll persist with this because all of us. Have a clear recollection of what the promises were at the time.
Yeah, no, okay, thank you. Thank you for persisting with it. Uh, councillor Strong.
I wonder whether this might again be raised at JMC.
Yep, can that be directed through the, through the chair and, and see if we can get any answers. Councillor Russell?
Just to say that, that the joint committee is trying to get people from the ICB to attend and they're supposed to be attending for our January.
I think I'd heard that, yes, that's right. I know the date keeps changing. Um, yeah, okay, well, hopefully. Hopefully you can pin the ICB down and get some answers in due course, but if they come, absolutely, if they come. Okay, um, E. Transfer of rights, Biggleswade Common. Note it, yeah, okay. Right, number fourteen, public open session, and I think the members of the public have just gone who were, uh. Meant to be coming to the open sessions. I'm not quite sure what that was all about, but, um, they have now gone, they have gone, so, okay. Um, so is there anyone online, Helen? No, everyone, everyone's, everyone's gone, okay. Thank you very much. Can we, um, um. Get permission to go into exempt session, we're happy?
Move it.
Move it, yeah, great, thank you. Brilliant.